Alungili Tasil sel mer gumiroguil alungili Tasil semmera gavu Vice President Senetor Mariur, ma diregal ma alungili Tasil semmera gavu Flo Lider Senetor Aldabeel, ma gumiroguil mrengasuliu mlosibiu mema gada. Guk asuese momisaa pibir aurele dama kadugutmoklama. Pokma asmirel teal ngia moma ngewal silsra el al-15 special sessionurgid el mora order. Diregal mwa rolgol.
Senetor Lenzer Basilius?
Oi.
Senetor Rugubaiikwai Inabo?
Oi.
Senetor Stevenson Chek Kwartey?
Oi.
Senetor Tichey Imru Mozau?
Oi.
Senetor Maq Eblaw Rudim?
Oi.
Senetor Umi Isangbaw?
Oi.
Senetor Gasugi El Tapsunino? Senetor Andrew Tabalwal?
Oi.
Senetor Salvador Sadoy Talams?
Oi.
Senetor Meison Ierabangal Whipps?
Oi.
Flo Lider Sessiril Aldabeel. Vice President Ray Mariur?
Oi.
President Hojtons Pablis?
Oi.
Mister President Ariak Worum?
Ariak Wrumia Senetor Sunino excuse, bodontira Senetor Aldabeel bol omkarargid aurele dama el al-sils Senetor Aldabeel.
Oi President, al mutal alungili Tasil semmera gavu ma Vice President ma rebekel senetors. Solaga bodo lamol mrtial atendargida por sel item form, ma ania tablo el chornal President amo muda adaptel sel gotel chornal 24 day chornal ra 5th regular session.
Si da motion namdu ne sekan matirge roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoi sey Flo Lider.
President direkal sel de porsel ongeru chornal ma kralia motion muda adapt ra second day chornal ra 5th special session.
Si da motion namdu ne sekan ma tirge roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoi sey Flo Lider.
Aloi sey President lamol ma guk komesaigal gaminigisun ma obisa President. Anisel gotel gaminigisun Prescam 11-431, tiangna transmit presidencial proclamation number 24-374. Ni awal declare month of September as a national emergency treatment month. Di denauternie de porsel next gaminigisun 11-432. Tiangna gukirela gaminigisun ilkirela investment delegation ASI Taiwanese Chamber of Commerce mle oldingargid ra plur belau. Ra el al sanday ma tidenauternie for our information. Idam lamol President dia ganga sel 6 ma 7. De pora 8 ania sel nga reporta nga standing committee reporting. Ma kralia motion muda adapt ra standing committee report 11-257. Ilkirela Senate Resolution 11-198.
Si da motion namdu ne sekan bodontira chairman ra vice chairman Senetor Inabo. Bol buskidar report Senetor Inabo.
Solangi Mister President Alungili Tasil. Tel Senate Standing Committee Report number 11-257. Ah report angirela Senate Resolution 11-198. Tel Senate Resolution number 11-198 President. Amilngarteal blaire amoldurok al mrtial blairsera August 28. Mang kadamlo mesangia gamle asainar ngia el merakamiti ra vice chairman. El momesar ngia reportar ngi. Tel Senate Resolution 11-198. Amo confirmara reappointment ra Ms. Elisa N. Morey. El mutal momember ra board ra civil service pension plan il kalsila ewan ra. Ma kamiti amlo omesagel babilgela Ms. Morey. El amlo turok al may lul bangkel sel appointment ra President. Mang kadamlo mesangal wasengal Ms. Morey atilo braskura Medienti. Ediregal ma braskura University of Guam. Engiloa AS degree ngi, a such as of arts degree. Ra lasen community college rasa Susan Villa California. Emlarsay emrgom emlantiniel mora California State University ngara Chico. Mang ngiloa Bachelor of Arts degree ngira interdisciplinary social science and anthropology. Ngadiregal mle sabel tovra graduate study ra educational psychology. Ra California State University ngara Long Beach California. Mang tel resamere ngia diregal wa aisel waseng mal magatatangal ngara. Igakidre oriora education. Eh ngaria eh ngara total leadership position. Mang ulmo lal sense ra PCC. Al lolis akla cultural anthropology. Ra continuing education program. Ediregal mle mediator, Rallent Court. Ediregal mla oriora teacher social studies and English ra Medienti High School. Em il siral ngarsee yonglo chairperson ra social studies department. Enganga amlo oriora lajang instructor apalaw community college. El ra 2004, almoo 2010. Mang diregal amlo sabel mo full time al teacher Vice President ra Medienti High School. Ediregal mlo principal, principal ra Medienti, el mo 2013. Mang elaltay mengal Ms. Morey. Ah olis akla apalawan history ma culture ra PCC. Eh wael chairperson arsegi del guk program ra PCC lo warala olis akla togora belau. Mang. Ah kamiti amlo mesertel egal babilgela Ms. Morey. Emrgonge. Emlo ottabadi abavierel mora Ms. Morey. Il kor oge rangi ilkiril tel lumalatkela President tel mori. El mutal mo harapor ra civil service pension fly plan. Mang miluusel merakamiti lwaseng mal dirgo samariar. El mutal mol ngaseo artial board ra civil service pension plan. Ediregal lwaseng mal. El sewale blagaruul eh kamirel mutal lewar ra el ngartial board. Ling wael koramagatatangal ngartial board. Mal namomdagaliya igel koru. Challenges. Mang mle oaisel waseng mal concern ilkirela stability tel pension fund. Eh mal madengel waseng koru mal mlamomkasaya ododar ngi adik medungeng mo. O ause el trust fund ra pension. Mang mal waseng ngakil kiril koru oral masil saruudel kirila igel. Lingiya apalasi change sel gidet el gutmokle. Em wasabel sabakli tel pension planargid. Waseng igel roguil lorura bekal silsel. Oratelti el pension fund. Ah alongotmokl lo kiwalaa. Nor tirakla igel rogulla ma apalasi ngia orurtel emangadareder oratelti el fund. Ndink mal waseng al reformer tel pension. Ilkirela long term viability tel trust fund mal mal giridet el gutmakli. Mang. Mal madengeya igel bekal challenges tel tal boarda face. Ngamla mo. Tel sugumangal mutal mangayertel lumalatkela el mortel boardengla moma. Ongewang el turml ngi angartial board. Mang mal madengeya igel. Ngar alel magatmaklila tel pensioner kidel ilkiril olbirakalulau. El motmaqni ma tirgel marula apalasi. Emrgom osabir el gutmakli tel pension fund. El mo osabel mal mol mal magatmokrar adribelal masuga pensioner elang. Matirgel el mo masugura atarakla waseng el dirgamraelmeel malbatoga employees raka plementa. Mang no kiwai ka egidel. Qualificationsar ngi ma leadershipar ngi. Ngal maasadiregal wael magataklil sel. Ngara maybrel. Tara magataklila maybrel. Em mal magatatangal diregal ngatia igel koru non governmental organization. El women's group ra oriora. Mang baloil al domisar ngi. Marula oriora balulu van triktiregal maasal magatmokrar oriora. Mal mrengasule rai egidel leadership position sar ngi. Asyuanga ma diregal osisaklila kiibela ma rolela askulela. Mamdengeya togor belau raka akalitser kidra PCC. Mang ultuirege egidel lo relel mora buaima sel waseng mal dirka samariar mutal sabel ol ngasiortel boarda pension. Yaga mitiamal regamen tal wasipol sabela Senate tel gongei. El guk tel resolution number 11-198. Tel uktel ngua Ms. Elisa Morey. Angongeringi mal uktel ngara boarda pension el mutalewar ra. Mang tegida reporta kamiti President. Eh kamiti amal unita supporta tel nomination ra Ms. Elisa Morey. El mutal mora boarda civil service pension fund. Solang.
Solang Senetor Inabo. Ariansol megagamintil giril tel gamiti report. Certices. Utel mgedonge sessionurgid el mora order. Flo Lider.
President gada gara diya sel deportera. Ah ser reportel diregulare reportar ngia ser Inabo. Sel 257 ma aldega koru model diskasyone odosenkeo.
Ke al suman degia diskasyone tirge roguil gongertel standing committee report 11-257 du oi. Om tok. Namoi sey Flo Lider.
President. Lamol me di, ulingita President ma gada lamol me di ikutelon tirasur certices.
Certices. Utel mgedonge sessionurgid el mora order. Flo Lider.
President, de lamol me lmer sel item 9. Por sel special report of special gamiri. Anisel imol reporta nga semak. Kralia motion muda adapt ra Conference Committee Report 11-11. Tiangna girela Senate Bill 11-81, ST2, HT2, CD1.
Si da motion namdu ne sekan bodontira Senetor Kwartey bol buskidar report. Senetor Kwartey.
Solange Mister President ra teal. El mo reporter tel Conference Committee Report 11-11. Agueraboka reporta nisolungtel teal de goten megasular roguil Senetors nosabir. El gongerte iyidel Senate Bill 11-81. En lo ST2 mora house. Tamlo mesar ngi diregal guk lepasin mo ST2. Nimlaniya yel terstal koramlo mariya disagreement. Tamlo ra Conference Committee. Tel vila Mister President. Ah 11-81 di khatilibel koru ogisa memoridira mal magatatang. Tiangna ah vilen. El mo magatmoklar agarbil ma otutel. Ma urerela obis. El mongora arsel triyalat. El mariya disability sector alubengalitati ra audeswir ma bedingir. Et tiangna. Maria forel sectionar ngia otel sectiona se momoktuber sel obis. Ra people with disability. Eh mo former coordinating committee. Teegidel coordinating committee amo mariar adal ngara total sector sera government. El motmaque mol usi sel dodai. Ra urerela abodo mesa governmentar belau. Ma plur belau bolom esera ateletelela abodo sigayel ngeso. Ma supportel mortige aladri mariya alitatura audeswir ma bedingir. Ediregal mol usi segidel national apalasi ebekel lerurak. Et tel gamiti me. Eh mutel momadrod. El momesu wasesel obis amlo ateletelela ureril. Tamlol taotra urol wangaratetelel. Emariya giridel samoklo batmosumokle. Eguk moruliaba esel ateletelela otutela urol lerurak. Eguk wael matraklil mutel memudel every two years from now into the future. Teegidel la Mister President. Amnana Senate emlor a house. Tel tilo daro. Ablel intorsinyasenetosera january 23, 2023. Emrgue emlora House of Delegate. Eh tultabil sera July 26, 2024. Emlaniya egidel bevir change. Emlora alsil tal bill manglaniya country. Tel tal bill, Senate Bill, emlo ST2 ra house. Osisiu tinahamal maklul change in morning. Et tiangna mo provide malibemorura support ma ayegiroguil services. Ilkirela ra adri mariya alitatura audeswir ma ba audeswir. Emo esperagarel. Ah sesera yel udoudel taxela rom madgol. El mo supporter segidel gamiti. Ediregal mo omuner segidel segidel obis. Bseral bol alunga house el may. Emlaniya egidel bevir korablo niya disagreement egidel lobentrit. Endi ayegiroguil adimle technical in valen in appearance. Endimle technical. Adimle imong ngara apalasi Lego. Ma gamitil gao ra Conference Committee gao. Ma Conference Committee rahaosa amlo meet. Mrengasulela ah delegate ta ganay. Mal mrengel urorl giriltiang. Emrgonge emlomosamokla yegidel differences. Mang otel differences Mister President. Endi mariya egil technical changes emnor sel legislative funding. Ya ongerul mle klo changes. Adia tamlo adra house mle sorir. Li redusera aklungel sel gamiti. Eh molchisapa ral bevir alada imor aladri mne soril olchisbringi. Tirgeel parents. Ra aladri ngaria disability sector. Se dimlakal disagreea Senate. Endi tulumdasul wasel mariya additional members evolsubil mesoyis. Segidel language amlo sois. Misel overa page 7 ra 12. Resel G. Waseg additional members ra coordinating committee. Ah maybe edens elme mungi. Endin girila kamiti boat request ra ngil trura obis ra President. Le ulmati ayide Mister President tamlo ogierdol touri. Terkamo merura regulations. Mendal subiril di gamiti gongerti. Letamomurura regulations rablur belau. Mang klobal gula albol trura obisa President el meras Senate. Ongerul mle rai gel changes. Se Mister President ta sel sel. Sel ududil sel bol meet sel. Ta yingarakle. Stipend. Dimlakal salbo takralal wasel bol meetanaria stipendaringi. Buti ayide Conference amlo establish wasi. Sel tal bol meet egidel adra gamitin fifty dollars. El diwa yel ayalbekal board sel bol meet fifty dollars a day. Resel sel low meeting. Ediregal naniya sel wael apalasi Mister President. Ta obtiyaringi ngara. Ngar sel page 10 of 12. Ngiludoudel. Ludoda tobako ma alcohol taxel tilo. Dagema etulbringel. Ah imong. Ah funding, two years funding. El mo establish sel obis. Two percent er sel taxera rom madgol. El mo omuner sel obis. Ongerunga one percent. El mo supporter sel urerela segidel gamiti. Momluusra apalasi. Emrgonge umsa segidel obis el mo implementing. Our order lulusper ngi a house. Adilul waseng allocated. Emrgue degal laps. Se dimil language. Endil allocated ringi bulgula wasendal sabela obis lulusper ngi. Ma Conference Committee amne agree wasi. Kada mospera order authorize appropriate ringi. Mang mosabira moselti el obis lulusper ngi. Misel gamiti lo el mosper ngi. Emrgolilya segidel wordel waseng yalsumangaria momedel endi alaps until etota utegidu. Ediregal siral meti el HT2. Emlaniye segidel amendment ra ngar sel page 11 of 12 ra gamiti report. Sel amlo. Oh girela Palau Community Action Agency. Ilkirela yel udoudel amlo lapse. Segidamdeel wasegadamle kolor segidel silseng. No dealsuedel akamodeitaktir. Mang amlo multra segidel. Tel tel. El Senate Bill 11-81, ST2, HT2. Mayegida major changes Mister President. Gamitil gao ra Conference Committee gao. Ma Conference Committee rahaosa amlo agree. Emle signar report. Ma regamen del wasa Senate tel adaptetel. Tel Senate Bill 11-81, ST2, HT2 en CD1. Ilkirela program. Malubeng bill girela. Otpel obis. Ma sel apalasi. Ma urorl girela people with disability rablur belau. Solangi Mister President.
Solange Senetor Kwartey. Senetor Aldabeel.
President ra teala. Chairman akoradi. Question gaga segidel koru apalasi change. El leon discussar ngi gumi ma. Tel Conference Committee. Segidel ngara page 7. Tiang bulgula kmasel. Tiasel. Il sugumetiel coordinating committee amo. Oavol require additional members. Etamoruli onitel mora. Tamoboutel first. Tel gongetmal sekan mosper additional al gamiti members. Emo requesta President. Mang appointer ngi egidel abouter ngi member. El mo odal tel coordinating committee. Akola adik question egidel osisultana President appointegida Senate. Tamak confirm sel appointment. Malulakmusitire egidel buavol additional member el mo sois. Bang buavol special member. Mang vitira ospe a confirmation ra Senate. Te dega vitigar restamembers. Adia akola di. Segidakasakamakalstendan i.
Senetor Kwartey.
Wasel overa page 5. Ya omesinde tirgeel. Tirgeel members. Ah member. Ah Ministry Minister of Health, Minister of Justice. Ayel wael representative ayel organization. Ah la appointed tirah President. El mora yel obis. Tel ulmo special. Alsumang mariya member community malibem organization. Tel kamiti ospe wasegospe expertise ti. Eh giril mo go through obisa President. Teling one of the functional bol oruler according to adrala. Wasegal sumtamurura regulation. Endalasela kamiti diyongitri me otutri laroorayel regulation. They have to go through the process of being appointed. Eh malak confirmation ra President Semley koru opiniya adrala.
Ariangudu. Degiha. Senetor Mariur.
President, melasegidel. Tirgeidel. Member tel organization segidel ngara sel ngara page 5 of 12. Sel. Sel wase sel number 6. Gayidel bol appointer ngia President. Engera diregal memla ngir olbirakalulau. Se ngel number 6 se. Ngel adogetfor.
Senetor Kwartey.
Oi, momesese number 6 ma number 7. Ngietegia diregal me. Appointing, ngel number 7 ladi appointer ngi ah President. Tel mora yel organization. Ni sel. Ayesel segidel tegidel additional member. Persuonte tel page telo. Page 6. Ngarisel any other members. Se ulmo tmuwe Vice President. A house amne soril malutar bevir diregal member. For example sel representative ra national healthcare financing governing body. Eguk Senate tulumdasul waseng global gula bolom esayen benefit ra healthcare fund. Ma waseng ngara mariya benefit ra healthcare fund. And so helpa diregal people with disability. Ni seral muluteng low recommendation wase bosel del openar ngi. Malsumtel gamiti me megid. Emariya additional members. Il giril ospe expertise ti evolsel mo trusegidel process. Adimle recommendation ra. Ang adrala. Wasi seral tovra mo ST2. Endidil wasa gamiti tegid gamiti disbel eda any additional members without any approval appointment ra President. Mang mle advisor adrala ra Senate ma house. Adilul wasen sabel waise. Endi. Asumtomomurura regulations rablur belau. Eh giril mungi sampanava legal legal. Mr. Aklisi aklisi. Ete tru the President. Malubeng President temetmul olbirakalulau. En meras Senate. And that's what they recommended as a language sel morala.
Senetor Rudim.
Solange Mister President Alungili Tasil. Kamamiti supporter tel intenti Mister President to create tel mechanism. Ma ti. So porsel esesel page 6 of 7. Chairman la tetrela funding tel system. Se diwado clarifying waseng for the first two years. Sel initialization tel programming. One percent er sel watching tax. Maluun two percent. Sel dimagadrodar ngi egel fonda degal laps. After that and then subject to audits, ma review, ma assessment. Asa how to go from there waise.
Diwala President.
Diambu.
Alsumuturne Senetor Rudim el mora page 10. Eh segideng. Amlo mle new recommendation. Adiregal Chairman ra vice chairman ra house. Akundasa Inabora ya Senate agimit. Emlaniya concerning ding koru wael mildera lastan minita. Adilul wasi. Endalasela al obligate ododel next budget year. So what they. Ah new recommendation wase. Di debastira startup funding. And two percent in two years. Endi alaps embosil startetel obis. Emrgonge sel kamiti sel bol meet. El magadrodertel apalasi. Eh debastira funding at di one time. Evolsubir lo mesu waseng regel uspelir el ngalo toura budget budget request. My hope is.
Lamol.
Mister President, akmga akmrengasula chairman ma gamitigit maklil segid. Le selbodome segel programs. Malugila moktegar ngi. Amlo olmo isyu atogorado. Endit tiang amendment eh Mister President. El mortel ulasamola. Awal sadedlan rengil about one ma two years. Ek capta. Mang morihasa unforce awal oversight tel system. Eh lulap performance. Agun antu itsef lulap performance viviaringi. Mang adomesar ngi wongil bakas il budulu. El gutmakli oi te. We have heard that the priority of the government is being discussed. We have heard that the mechanism is being discussed.
Senator Rudim. Senator Lam.
Mr. President, I have heard that Senator Cortez has been speaking. We have heard that the conference committee, the House, the Senate. We have heard that the president has been speaking. We have heard that the government has been talking. We have heard that the government has been talking. We have heard that the disabled government is disabled. We have heard that the disabled government is disabled. We have heard that the disabled government is disabled. We have heard that the government is being discussed. We have heard that the government is being discussed. We have heard that the disabled government is being discussed. I have heard that the compromise is being discussed. We have heard that the disabled government is being discussed. We have heard that, Mr. President.
Senator Aldebeir.
President, I have heard that the provision of additional members is required. The appointment of the president. We have heard that the board of the commission requires the process. We have heard that the president has provided the provision of the member. We have heard that compensation. We have heard that if the member is removed. We have heard that if the regulation is enforced.
Senator Cortez.
Senator, I have heard that the understanding of the global goal is on page six of 12. We have heard that the Girela law is on page eight. We have heard that the permanent committee. We have heard that the ministers are designated. We have heard that every four years, depending on who is the minister. The designation of the office is being brought up. We have heard that the committee is being asked for two years or to the next review. We have heard that the organization is being required to be experienced. We have heard that the transitional appointment. We have heard that the organization is being represented on a regular basis. We have heard that through laws.
Senator. We have heard that the report of the conference committee, number eleven to eleven, is due today. I am talking. My leader.
President, I have heard that the report of the committee. We have heard that the report is on page eleven. We have heard that the first and second reading, the third reading. We have heard that the final reading is on page eleven, ST1, HT2, ST1.
If the motion is approved, we will answer the questions. We will discuss them. I have a question.
Senator Lencel Vasilius.
Oi.
Senator Rukwai Kikwa Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Steven Chongchei Cortey. Senator Tichey Imruu Mangsaou.
Oi.
Senator Marco Labra Rudim. Senator Umi Sangbaw. Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talam.
Oi.
Senator Emesorni Abangan Wips.
Oi.
Floride Cecil Eldebel. Vice President Karay Mariur. President Oconz Pobles. Mr. President, I have a question.
I have a question. On page eleven, ST1, HT2, AM12. My leader.
President, we have heard that the bill is on page twelve. We have heard that the final reading is on page one-one-one, ST1. We have heard that the floor amendment.
I have a question.
Page eleven, ST1. Bill for the enactment of a budget law for fiscal year 2025. Through the authorization of the sum of 131,477,510. And appropriation of the amount of 128,785,593 from the National Treasury. For the general operations and special revenues. And the choices of the Republic of Palau. For the fiscal year ending September 2025. To amend section two of RPPL 11-31. And RPPL 11-34 for the Ministry of Health. To amend section forty of RPPL 11-31. For the NDBP loan restructure. Amend section fifteen twenty-six of PNC title twenty-three for voting polling places. We have heard that the number one is on page twenty-five. It is 131,477,510. And it is 128,785,593 dollars. We have heard that the September 2025. We have heard that the section two of RPPL 11-31. By RPPL 11-34, the Ministry of Health. We have heard that the section forty of RPPL 11-31, the NDBP loan. We have heard that the section fifteen twenty-six, the PNC, is on page fifty. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved.
If the title is approved, the decision is made. A discussion. I have a question. We have heard that the session is being discussed. My leader.
President, I have heard that the final reading is approved. We have heard that the motion is approved. The final reading is on page eleven, ST1. Mr. President, we have heard that the floor amendment is approved. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved. We have heard that the chairman, Inabo. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved, the Mrs. Sada Tor SS. We have heard that Senator Cortey, Mariur, Vasilius. We have heard that the medical referral housing is approved, the floor amendment two. We have heard that Senator Wips, Inabo, Cortey. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved. Mr. President, the floor amendment is approved. The floor amendment number one, the chairman, Inabo.
If the motion is approved, the floor amendment number one is approved. The chairman, Inabo, is approved.
Mr. President, the floor amendment number one. We have heard that on section twenty-three. It is on page 111, ST1. We have heard that the number one is on page five. We have heard that on section twenty-three, it is 1.8 million. The Social Security Administration. We have heard that the social security. The amendment is on page one point eight million and two million. We have heard that the Social Security Board administrator. We have heard that the retirees. We have heard that the number one is on page five. We have heard that the number two million. We have heard that the minimum benefit adjustment. We have heard that the number one is on page six. We have heard that the adjustment is on page seven. We have heard that the budget for 2025 after the government's voting. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved.
Senator Inabo. Senator Aldebeir.
President, I have heard that the floor amendment is approved. We have heard that the number one is on page six. We have heard that the number one is on page five. We have heard that the number one is on page eight. We have heard that the number one is on page three. We have heard that the continuing to say fifty dollars. The number one is on page seven. At some point, the number one is on page eight. The number one is permanent increase. We have heard that the chairman arranged the meeting. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. Although the level payout benefits. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. We have heard that the number one is on page eight. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. We have heard that the number one is on page eight. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. Hopefully, we will support it. We have heard that the number one is on page seven.
Senator. I have heard that the amendment number one is due today. I am talking. My leader.
President, I have heard that the floor amendment is approved. We have heard that the floor amendment number two is approved. The chairman, Mariur, Vasilius.
If the motion is approved, the senator Cortez will submit the amendment number two. Senator Cortez.
Mr. President, the amendment number two is on page twenty-four. We have heard that the president has supported it. We have heard that the priorities are being discussed. We have heard that the program Tripler, Shriners Hospital Hawaii. We have heard that the Hawaii list is on page seven. We have heard that even though we have priorities. We have heard that the priorities are being discussed. We have heard that the social posterity. We have heard that the investment in the moral act. We have heard that the services are being discussed. We have heard that the amendment is approved. Even though the request of the president. We have heard that the million dollars is needed for a pension plan. We have heard that the three million dollars. We have heard that the investment is needed. We have heard that the Hawaii. We have heard that the Tripler, Shriners Hospital Hawaii. We have heard that the authority is appropriate to three million dollars. Most likely, a more additional number. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. We have heard that the amendment is approved. We have heard that the chairman, Vasilius, and the other members have been discussed. We have heard that the number one is approved. We have heard that the priorities are being discussed. We have heard that the amendment is approved.
Senator Cortez, I have heard that the floor amendment is approved. I have a question. I am talking. My leader.
President, the floor amendment is approved. We have heard that the floor amendment is approved. The whip, Inabo, is approved.
If the motion is approved, the senator Wips, Inabo, is approved.
Mr. President. The amendment number three is on PNC title thirty-four, sections three-three-zero-one, three-three-zero-two. Mr. President, I have heard that the situation is being discussed. We have heard that the drug trafficking and things related to drug abuse are being discussed. We have heard that drugs are available. We have heard that drugs are being used. We have heard that ice, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, LSD, morphine. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. It is fentanyl. We have heard that the drug is used in the medical industry as a painkiller. We have heard that it is now being distributed worldwide. For the purpose of facilitating drug addiction. We have heard that the effect of the drug. Mr. President, I have heard that the possible effects of fentanyl and other opioid derivatives. Opiom is on page seven. The number one is on page seven. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. To do other things. The purpose of the drugs is to make sure it doesn't happen or try to prevent it from happening. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. We have heard that the number one is on page seven. The purpose of the amendment is on page eight. The number one is opioids or opium derivatives which includes fentanyl. or opium derivatives, which includes fentanyl, elmo osisi akklalop singel, di, elmo osisi ngima, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, LSD, egel dodongi. Magida giril, klagal girila besel threat sel merabulwad, in terms of drug abuse. Eh, makmal ongi tangis, or tel gydel floor amendment. Malbon msi si alud, mal lagal nganiat, mal nganiat teelil tel mkitl gal metmura blurbelau. We have laws in place to address it. Makmal ongi tangis, or tel floor amendment number three, emosok, klak, glugu ganan ngalige, mar be bir gid, tel gydel mkitl gal. Akongi tangis, or beklad, omal msaule, mister president.
Sula, eh, Senator Ngirebang, karian od, Senator Sangbau.
Presidenta, msaate ale, akutakmal merengasulela, tigalintroduceurs. Senator Whips, ma Inabo ma Kwartey. Presidenta, akmal supportet yangi, omraq say this is proactive. Ndagadib ire, tegoy melbae belsis, vetea, dingara, bayboer gidra kwam, emlamu issue. Magad, elevator ngi, mora wa itegid, eh, wa it's a, diregal, wadgora syndrome esetsel mortigil adal lom, dasa se, abolo ruhtel tegoy, tigil ya konsekvensel ga mufais tringi. Eh, ndiagalsa edan meere, gamini tigid, eh, pasabling mufais ra wa itegid, eh, gangol tegoy, eh, lakadaralia, urior, magutmakli, sebe edel ngar alsetiagutmakli, prevent ra wa egel. Akkoradiregal, mle omes ra gora research se giril tel, mister president. Yanga, akmedel ngara twenty to forty times el more potent than heroin, mal msi si ilgar. Eh, lospe ar, mostling cancer patients, el, el lalom kuadaring, sel suumita ngarogurub. Makmal merengasulela, tigalintroduceurs, eh, mal ovantir, eh, mal qaset tigil ya giril motmokl ngi, rapto gurior, gada mo proactive, il gutmakli, era baibol problem, eb ader we act el trial mo, eh, diregal, mal gora, mal bedew gashira, da, da relishel, lem ringel discussion, eh, ndigre dimnos toba egal, eh, diregal, e cigarettes. Agel gyda egel urior, el omra ya mister presidenta, ngart tel bla, eh, da urior gid, ma galik serid, il gutmakli, meral sebaklela blurbelau, sula, mister president.
Sula, Senator Sangbau, Senator Basilius.
Sula ngai, presidenta, senetra tel, malungilitasel semarbeklad. Aktrial, el atya mo amend a title thirty-four, eh, Senator Ngirebang. Eh, di, eh, gukmes tringi, mo edra se gidde section five, mo edra line five, ra section three oh one. Eh, mosu ves aktrial oseigert tel, title thirty-four, tel, edimla keisang makteogeri. Eh, el atya mogi, outa, ta, 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 teogerm, alsebe ele, em explain. Sel oversel section twenty-one, na dimo konturner ngarawaseng, akultu, braoudasun, nde ha problem. Sel waseng any person who attempt to import. Eh, el aseng mostobra tigal, lol sisabagar, lol tu, eh, tel, agalgar alsa blurbelau. Tel mo completely por stop, eh, osisbelela, gar el metmura blurbelau. Tel gydel, el gar, eh, ndiregal, ngadadamadengel waseng, ngariya hospital, eh, gal help. Akting ol morsay gidde, eklutel mo dula imong, esel overa page two. Eh, el atya se mostobra importe, diregal, page two, mostobra ngil dilab. Oh, koming, sel line eight, ra page two, awaseng any person who possess. Met yanga ndiregal, of course, akwa, akwat teogerm, alsebe ele, mluutel gora, explain ngil mogil, gora dekal swadal, el gora, ta, ta, maliawulaw gurub.
Senator Kwartey.
Mm, sula presidenta, dekal chen say di idil, ngarandingutel, el gar, ra, ngul motor clearsel level, el mora level ra aise mrogo. Belgul aseng, nde alstobra, eh, agel gydel medical industry, el importing for proper use. Prevent ra adal, lol tu, tel gar, nde ha licenser tel, ospe tringi for improper use, eh, tel amendment. Sel kuklul gongil waseng, sel possession, se dimla ngarala, el guk pertainer mayil be bir, eh, nde al, dimla amendment, tel la, unless, eh, mister, eh, chair.
Grand. Senator Ngirebang.
Sula eklutel gora di help ra discussion, malungila question, eh, Senator Basilius. Omar se gidde page one, evora line twenty-two. Ah, morphine, ngaralcela line twenty-two, lospe ira hospital, and it's already listed here. May sel tegolul swadal ya Senator Kwartey. It's about, it's about abuse. Ma adal, who has been prescribed, and, and it has been imported by a medical professional, a pharmacy, and so forth, tila dega issue. Di, tsuk ma adal, al guk mode, el lo ba imol tutul, mal galorful, eh, gal pinch alsel, abuse, inga degal medical professional, eh, degal for personal use. Eh, agabla bodo misra, anuse, mister president. Fentanyl comes in small pills, el bekpa dangil ngaralor ngi, la adal distribut, olava, muklu tu tu, that, that's how they move it around. Ma for medical purposes, tel amendment, adega affecter sel, msaura tel, mister president.
Senator Eldebail.
Presidenta, mo, ti amal, full supporter ngaral giril tel floor amendment. Presidenta, omraq meset ti amal, klaututreel giril, merengi edel, utmakli tigil, eh, wad include tel, tel fentanyl, elmo or alist ra egel wal hard drugs, elnya, eh, amgul, nde al, nde al, sebe edel, anadurai, eh, luben dega, gora prescription, emo msi sebringi, ma blurbelabu. Tel presidenta, ulak, mal supporter tringi, eh, gidda rogul mlsasel, el clip ra mesets, ra, governora kwam, el blensir tringi, vice president el mergidra, anak tulongo do. Lo ays ra situation ra kwam, na ma madha, akmedel telon, te tewid, la adra kwam, eh, tigil particular drug. Eh, yanga, eh, clora merigel, eh, emna, se gidde, emna sois ra kwam, eh, pasabling, adiregal, emna sois alsel abulwad. Eh, alagadarali, tigil, rulim, mmo, 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 mwa na list ra egel, mlgul ledol sis. Eh, sebe la adar el altarm, lol sis ber tel drugsel, me diha, al mudue, men degal, mutautra la. Met yanga, ma klaututreel, dhatmakli, include tel, tigil, particular, wal besel, feda, el drug, el mwa na egel, mlgul, nde al, lol sis ba ngi, di la adar den, eh, professional doctors, malu betra, tigil adal adurai, sel lol tu adra. Makmal, oh, ta full supporter ngaral giril, yangi, ti amal giril, merengi edel utmakli, emsebe edel, merengi edel, stoba egel, ngar omrole el mail, eh, il egal el fentanyl, sula president.
Karian od, Senator Basilius.
Oi, ndiagam, akutaksamla, jantsir se gidde, gora amle, konturne. Presidenta, senet, eh, ngadiregal, mal supporter aoudasu, len, wa yal gora, tel, wa egal di lu floor leader. Tel, ndiregal, namo pandemika, ayuset tringi, ra blura, a pacifik, eh, espesely blura kwam. Ndiregal, gora akmedan, nde adodongi, muna sois berbelau, ndiagam. Di se gidde, gora, amle konturne, waseng, arbol tok tangam, al uben ta mo importer tringi, mesois, lo kiwa, ka licenser tringi, mo, to mostobra ngi, emo find tringi, se gidde, se ya, da gora amle konturne tringi. Ta, ndiregal, buto gar smel ngarbelau, eh, ndiregal, lospe tel gar. La, guk, tokoraw gurub tir, eh, ndi, se gidde, presidenta, senet, emsula.
Tigil gonger tel amendment number three, du oi. Om tok, floor leader.
Se presidenta, se mla adaptai gel, three floor amendment. Me drutel, mora main motion, eh, klutel state ra main motion, elmo pasra dur, then final within, a Senate Bill eleven dash one eleven, eh, ubanke la egel gi the three floor amendment, elmo SD four.
Se gidde motion na mudung, bal sum di gian od, el merengasual mokbun, eh, gada motion kiyo. Karian od, eh, digang, Senator Mosow.
Sula, eh, presidenta, tel, dimosawal mora record, waseng, historic legal gora, sel tabela election, gada blool morsel, forty PNC, section three twenty-seven, lo abod en aktra continuing budget authority. Se, ol donotmoqur giril, guk gora, mlgul tel, meral mail, besel twelve government, magad guk timo mesa egel, dimla the fundra el al fiscal year twenty twenty-four, eh, ngar se gidde, lolakal, el mosois ba twenty twenty-five, esel sis ba apesel government, ke tegukmo, magatmoqra arul, budget ra twenty twenty-five. Ma, gusel, gada mal, dimla maintain, a level, na spending, na twenty twenty-four, ni gora, aurang, waseng, bom, bambe, mesbe edel, but bakla, continuing budget authority, eh, guk, mlgul sel me, sois, be, apesel government. Dimesawak mo igel, mister presidenta, emsula.
Sula ngai, Senator Mosow. Digang od, sum di gian od, eh, Basilius. Sum di gian od, eh, gada motion kiyo, ma klerga marol goli.
Senator Elcher Basilius.
Oi.
Senator Gubaiigi, kuwa Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Che Kwartey.
Oi.
Senator Tichey Imru Mozau.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangbau.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabulwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Oi.
Senator Mason Ngirebang Whips.
Oi.
Floor leader Cecilil Eldebail.
Oi.
Vice president Cray Mariur.
Abstand vice.
Presidento Kuntz Paulas.
Oi.
Mister presidenta, se kiwa eleven years, eh, dega no.
Senator giril tel Senate Bill number eleven dash one one SD four, amlam ngart tel bla, ra ongedei, ulubong longiwell. Floor leader.
Presidenta, gidde sel mla, rogir, ra bill calendar gi, ok debor sel resolution calendar, eh, deganganarifral, ma debor sel adoption, nganiya, emol, resolution adoption. Ke sel nomination, eh, appointment tra, a Miss Elisa Enmorey. Ma, pokaliam motion, eh, mister presidenta, mada adaptra, eh, Senate Resolution eleven dash one ninety-eight.
Se gidde motion na mudung e se, na, ma klerga mbrosa balot short pieces. Puttel, mgodongi, a session trigide, el mora order. Ba egel, dil disela, sentiyo ngilaya, Miss Elisa Enmorey, elmo dal a civil service pension plan, el turmri ngi, ewarak. Ngilay eleven years, eh, dega no, congratulation, el mora ngal redil. Floor leader.
Presidenta, gada, se amlo, or kiyo la, sel resolution calendar gi, de lakad guk morsel, mal mol, mal mora, sel fifteen, egel guk, Miss Lennas Communications, medidano ta egel, Miss Lennas Communications, na isel eleven dash thirteen oh five, na ra, eh, mister Kyoto, eh, PUC, meral Senate president, Paulas, el gil, msaada girila tgora PUC Employee Health Insurance, ma term limits are employees, eh, PUC. Diregal nganiya, Miss Lennas Communications, eleven dash thirteen oh six, na ra, mister Mira Lamson, el mora, Miss Pesera, el girila tgora leadership debriefing with Senate and House of the Get, eh, ya information, eh, girila, meeting. Miss Lennas Communications, eleven dash thirteen oh seven, na ra, Miss Louis, na ra Senator Inabo, el guk giril sel PEC decision on propriety of former president, eh, mang sauska, di silmo president, eh, blurbelau. Diregal, ngariya, Miss Lennas Communications, eleven dash thirteen oh eight, na ra, Miss Kosiba, eh, meral Senate president, el guk girila request, el mo go host sel upcoming Palau International Gulf Reef Center, twenty-fifth anniversary gala, diregal di, for our information. Diregal, ngariya, Miss Lennas Communications, eleven dash thirteen oh nine, na ra, eh, diregal, na ra, mister Kyoto, PUC, el mora Senator Inabo, girila AfPak residential subsidy, lifeline subsidy, emsel, eh, WWO residential, eh, subsidy, sel toraran. Eh, sel ulbong, el Miss Lennas Communications, eleven dash thirteen ten, na ra, mister Igeda, el mora Senator Inabo, al di update, el giril, sel disbursement, eh, sel funding, el mora retired and disabled citizens' social assistance. Eh, egel gyda egel guk, mesois ber, eh, al session, eh, presidenta, el Miss Lennas Communications, alaga, angod, eh, boti yul mora Miss Lennas Business, ma, ngariya, Miss Lennas Business, eh, Senator Sabastia Telir, eh, adabor announcement.
Senator Inabo.
Presidenta, mal, unilita sil, akmal merengasulir senators, no sabedel pasra budget ra FY twenty twenty-five, eh, la sis, ra dut reading, mang guk mora house. Eh, senet presidenta, mal, disoal, eh, elmo commenter sel, eh, Miss Kam, thirteen oh five, se, ontrir, eh, employees ra PUC. Mang, mal disoal, low ays, eh, tigiroguil, low dera PUC, le signa tel petition, eh, tiga te del, eh, te, del dart, three hundred el, el employees, amle, signa ra PUC. El, el wa yal, eh, mondalingi ra waseng, ngarala, eh, waseng, ngel employee ra PUC, lo gual te la, eh, la, awdudera tarar, el morab, eh, agiril, sel contractor tringi, el two years a term tringi, ma, el, el girila, a guk CEO, ma board, elmo reviewer, sel performance tringi, eh, guk renew ra contractor tringi. Ma, akmal disoal, lo ays, eh, presidenta, waseng, aroguil employees ra PNC si, angara one year contract. Mang every year, ngariya performance evaluation er tir, eto renew ra employment contractor tir. Ma, tigil rogui, el employees ra government, eh, Republic of Palau, el tir a exempt, ta, degal civil service employees, adiregal, eh, mal lamoboto, employees ra government, namo, eh, lakra tal te la, eh, exempt employees ra national government. Adiregal, ngar exempt contract, mang ngariya contractor tir, eh, every year, el diregal, ngariya performance evaluation, eh, management, eh, mystery, salary increase, eh, extend the, eh, term ra contractor tir. Mang, tel provision, el waseng, giril, ngariya review ra performance a employee ra bekarra, eh, eh, wa yal ngarala ra PUC, len, hm, droguil employees, eh, gora wa yal blalbo, ngalak, tigil, mal, lamoprofessional, giril perform, ma, yanga, emsa taalela, a management, eh, review a performance ra, eh, employee. Mang, akundase, this is nothing unusual, mang giril, adra PUC, my employees ra PUC, emasuka more than forty thousand, el morab, eh, dimel waseng, aroguil, adal ogu, ra ngar employment contractor tir. Mandiagal, eh, tel petition er tir, eh, eh, wa yal, eh, tuukmal mo, wa yal civil service employees, eh, gal, employees ra PUC. Tel ulang, mloy, mloy leak, emo degal government, eh, employees, eh, tiram, emo degal ngar civil service base. Tya, Ulan, Mlo, Mlo, Yle, Ak, Mo, De, Al, Government, Ah, Employees, Er, Tira, Mo, De, Gal, Nga, Ra, Civil Service, P, Scale, Eh, Mo, De, Gal, Nga, Ra, Yid, Le, Eh, Civil Service, Ah, Employment, Ah, Upgrade, Eh, Eh, Mus, Be, Yir, Eh, Hire, Ah, Professional Employees, Uy, Ra, Den, Gima, Ra, Al, Mam, Mas, Uwe. Ah, Ta, Ra, Nakt, Tyal, Petition, Eh, President, Adi, Gade, Wa, Si, Nga, Ya, Provision, Er, Sen, La, Ra, Puc. El, Wa, Ya, Dol, Wa, Si, N'Gade, Sebe, Ya, La, Puc, Il, Mom, La, Ya, Private Health Insurance. Mah, Ham, Dung, Ya, Ra, Adra, Bela, Ro, Uy, Ah, Nga, Tyal, National Health Insurance. Mas, Sen, Su, Mu, Gbong, Nga, Ra, Private Health Insurance, Eh, Wa, Ya, Port, Tab, Long, Ah, Health Insurance, Ra, Ha. Ma, Ah, Sen, Provision, Nga, Ra, Al, Se, La, La, Akmul, Wa, Si, Ah, Adra, Puc, Puc, La, Uy, Ra, Already, Ta, Ra, National Health Insurance. Di, Wa, Yid, Ra, Uy, La, Uy, Tyal, Blai, N'Gade, Nga, Ra, National Health Insurance. And, Di, Igel, Contribution, Ra, Employee, Il, Mor, Ah, National, Ah, NHI, Medical, Ah, Savings Account, Tir. I, Ge, Sebe, El, Mo, Pero, Eh, Ga, Yid, Le, Private Health Insurance, Tir, Man, Sebe, El, Pero, Sen, Premium, Er, Tira, Kalvo. Mang, Akum, Das, N'di, Gade, El, El, De, Kas, To, Ra, Ah, Puc, Si, N'da, Gala, Offer, Ah, Private Health Insurance. Ling, Al, Su, Mu, Puc, Si, As, Wall, El, Eh, Offer, Ah, Private Health Insurance, Am, Ot, Tab, Long, Ah, Medical Insurance, Ra, Employees, Er, Tir. Ya, La, Wa, Si, Sebe, La, Employee, Il, Mo, Pero, Ah, Ah, Private Health Insurance. And, Di, Gade, Sebe, La, Board, Ma, Management, Ra, Puc, Long, As, Akli, Ou, Duh, Di, Ra, Adra, Puc, Ro, Uy, Eh, By Three Hundred Dollars, A Month, Or Four Hundred Dollars, A Month. Ma, It's Employee, Am, Mu, Ar, Ba, Ba, Ou, Duh, Di, Mus, Sebe, El, Pero, Sen, Medical Insurance, Ringi, Ah, As, Wall, Nga, Ya. Mang, Akum, Das, When, Ndios, Is, Si, Al, Nga, Ra, Payroll, La, Pe, Ringi, Mal, Puc, The Director, Pe, Ringi, N'tyak, Mal, Ndios, Is, Si, With Personal Cost. Ma, Ah, Adim, Le, Eh, U, Ulen, Nga, Ya, Se, Yid, Provision, Nala, Eh, Mister President, Ah, Ok, Kyar, Ra, Puc, Si, Ah, Captive Customers, Ki, Na, Chaka, Choice, Sir, Gid, Eh, Yid, Do, Puc, Il, Mu, Gua, Si, Mon, Ka, Eh, Ki, Di, Don, Ka. N'di, Gade, Sebe, Edel, Mu, N'di, Gade, Let, Tam, Gud, Di, Ra, Den, Giri, Gal, Mga, Di, Ra, Ra, Mer, Giri, Mga, Di, Ra, Su, We, Giri. Ma, U, Ull, Nga, Ya, Ga, Yid, Provision, Sir, Tal, Gibal, Lomb, Tab, E, Er, Tyal, El, Cost, Ra, Ah, Operations, Ra, Puc, Il, Tal, Gibal, Lomb, Tab, E, Ringi, Nga, Yo, Le, La, Gyal, Sal, Mal, Mor, Ba, Eh, Ra, Adra, Bela, Ro, Uy, Ah, Mal, Mom, Ta, Ar, B, Sari, Gada, Mal, Mah, Al, Mo, Obul, Mda, Sebe, Edel, Afford, Ah, Den, Gima, Ra, Al, Mam, Mas, Uwe, Giri. Ma, Akmal, Unil, Ta, De, Gal, Employees, Ra, Puc, Si, Al, Wa, Si, El, By, The, Lick, Tyal, Petition, Er, Tira, El, Mor, Ah, Board, Ra, Puc. Le, Puc, Si, Board, Nga, Ya, Mu, Il, Clis, Si, El, El, Mas, Trir, Igal, Benefiter, Tyal, Employees, Ra, Puc, Il, Su, Mu, To, Spet. Ol, Bi, Ra, Kal, Ula, Wa, Ah, Tiyak, La, Nga, Da, Neda, Operations, Ra, Puc, Si, Board, Ta, Nga, Da, Neda, Operations, Ra, Puc. Ki, Da, Di, Regulate, Ta, Ringi, El, Make Sure, Eh, Cost, Ta, Ringi, Ah, De, Gal, Sal, Gu, Mu, In, La, Krt, Sen, Yid, Ra, Adra, Bela, Om, Mga, De, Se, Edel, Man, Ka, Da, Ringi. N'di, So, Ha, Mu, Mu, Ya, Yid, Ga, Mint, Ta, Na, Mang, At, Tiyak, Adra, Puc, Il, Gora, Am, Kital, Do, Si, Wi, La, Das, Or, Si, Gada, Gora, Nga, Ya, Ap, Di, Er, Tir, Mal, Ube, Gada, Gora, Am, Ak, Ki, Er, Tir. Ling, Golo, Dung, Ya, El, Mu, Wa, Si, Ah, Board, Ma, Management, Ta, Puc, Si, Sebe, Er, Mu, La, Igal, Ro, Uy, Nga, Ra, Al, Se, La, Petition, Er, Tir. De, Gal, Necessary, Ol, Bi, Ra, Kal, Ula, Mu, Mukr, Ra, Igan. Sulang, eh, Mister President.
Sulang, eh, Senator Inavo. Karian Odo. Senator Talams.
Sulang, Mister President, Mus, Kati, Teyale. Diswa, Ye, Mister President, Eh, Mo, Ugh, Amendment, Na, Gal, Yid, La, A, Flor, Amendment, Nde, So, Ha, Al, Proposal, Mor, Al, La, Lo, Ungel, Tyal, Budget, Ra, La, Ra, Twenty Twenty Five, Yire, La, Mu, La, Pecier, Ra, La, Mel, October, One, Ra, La, Twenty Twenty Four. Tyal, Flor, Amendment, Eh, Nsa, Al, Proposal, N, President, Ah, Nsa, Al, La, Two Million Dollars, El, Mor, Palau, House, Sen, Authority. El, Mo, Ma, Sen, El, Policy Base Loan, Eh, Twenty Five Million. President, Ah, Am, La, Announce, Ngyi, Ma, Minister, Ra, Finance, Eh, Nga, Ra, Ten Million, N'Ya, Mor, Ah, Pro, Sti. Ah, Me, Proposal, Se, Mister President, Eh, Ul, Umar, Akna, Sen, Yid, La, Yid, Edel, Mus, Se, Tira, Adra, Bela, Yid, La. An, Id, Tira, Have, Si, El, Bor, Palau, House, Sen, Authority, Mu, Gi, Wa, La, In, In, Di, Ah, Loan Interest, Adi, Four Point Five Percent. El, Ma, Kte, Gani, Am, Di, Mot, Tirigel, Low, In, Gam, La, Adra, Bela, Eh, Mu, N'Ya, Te, Lir, Eh, Mu, N'Ya, Blir. Tirigel, Solid, Renovate, Abirir, Tirigel, Disabled, De, Usp, Yang, Ns. Se, Mister President, Nga, Ya, Ap, Tok, Ra, Er, Udart, La, Eh, Nga, Ra, Uy, In, List, Yid, Yid, La, Ha, Si. Os, Si, Ultame, Mister President, Nde, So, Ha, La, Lo, Tor, Da, One Point Eight Million, Eh, Mo, Om, Nga, Ra, Ah, Sig, Leg, Al, Fund, Eh, Mo, Yid, La, Ah, Infrastructure, Ra, Ab, Lu, Ra, I, Ra, Ma, Eight Million, Eh, Mor, Ah, Ah, Infrastructure, Ra, State, Ra, Me, Li. Al, No, Ma, Kne, Proposal, Yid, Mister President, Akum, Esa, Igal, Tab, Long, Blu, Em, La, Open, Ah, Ah, Government, N'Ya, Public Land, Eh, Is, U, List, Eh, Mor, Ah, Ah, Ra, De, But, Tok, Ah, O, Air, Ra, Nga, Ya, Ap, Tok, Ra, Six Hundred, Eh, Ap, Pligant, Eh, Lit, Even, Mor, Ah. Al, Oh, Nga, Ri, Tirigim, Lam, Al, Is, Er, Tir, N'di, Gade, Ak, Se, Er, Tir, Eh, Mor, Ah. Ra, 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 Eh, Mus, So, Is, Ra, Yid, List. Os, Si, Ultame, Nga, Ya, Adra, Lam, Odor, Abirir, Edi, Ga, Gals, Er, Mu, N'Ya, Den, Gima, Ra. Akul, Umar, Akla, Se, Tiyagidil, One Point Eight Million, Eh, Dun, Nu, Ra, Sig, Leg, Al, Fund. Sebe, Edel, Mo, Justify, Ngyi, Mang, Er, Se, El, Infrastructure Funding, Compact, Ra, Free Association, Eh, Lol, Be, Se, Tyal, Si, Ah, Ei, La, Twenty Twenty Three, Et, Tol, Tor, Da, Ten Million, Eh, Mer, Bela, Ra, Ab, Kra. Se, Mister President, Nga, Ri, Se, Yid, Il, El, Process, Ma, Lu, Ben, Position, Do, Gi, Ngyi, Eh, Justify, Se, Ludow, De, Le, Se, Be, Yid, Igal, Grant, The Government, Ta, Mna, Di, Gal, Mos, Ki, Nga, Ya, Yid, Process. Mu, Gi, Sen, Meeting, R, Gid, Uvang, Gal, President, Whips, Ngu, Lu, Ay, Se, Concebe, De, Usp, Yid, Igal, De, Local Funding. Eh, Mer, Gu, U, Uy, Le, Gada, Justify, Lu, Gi, Se, Yid, Process, Uvang, Gal, Se, National Investment, Infrastructure, It, Investment Plan, Eh, Mer, Gunt, Tor, Da, Igal, Ludow, De, Men, Se, Ra, Ra, Adra, Bela. Ding, Gu, Wa, Alda, Do, Eh, Yid, La, Igaidil, Long, It, Eh, Lo, De, Al, Sebe, De, Lo, Gals, Nga, Ra, La, Eh, Lo, Gong, Ya, Lo, Country, Ah, Senators, N'dik, Ma, Umar, Ak, Sel, Bon, Ya, Wa, Igaidil, Nida, Ra, Adra, Bela, Eh, Yid, Edel, Eh, Mo, Mukl, Ar, Mu, Da, Do, Re, El, Mu, Tut, Andi, Umi. Eh, N'Di, Yid, El, Mor, Am, Mu, Frager, It, Ay, Si, Yid, Do, Eh, Distribute, Sen, Igal, Do, Eh, El, Mor, Ra, Adra, Tira, Mal, Usp. Om, Am, Sulang, Mister President, Eh, Gure, Put, Yid, De, Budget, Ra, Blu, Bela, Twenty Twenty Five, Sebe, Edel, Gong, Ya, Ngyi, Ma, Government, Yid, La, Bon, Mes, Im, Ra, October, One, Ra, La, Ra, La, Twenty Twenty Four. Om, Am, Su, Va.
Pro Leader.
President, Ndi, Kian, Mis, Lan, Es. Eh, Vice President, Eh, Ado, Announcement, Nga, Ya, Announcement. Di, Wa, Se, President, Nga, Ya, N'La, N'Ya, Se, El, Sketch, Uld, De, Yid, R, Gid, Uvang, Gal, Ministry, Of Justice, Yid, Se, El, Tok, Ra, Drac. Nde, Sketch, Uld, De, La, Al, Si, Sen, Di, Tel, Session, R, Gid, Ab, No, Ulm, Nga, Adam, Le, Postpon, N'Ya, Mu, N'Mo, Next, Week, Ra, A, Wednesday, Ra, Er, U, Klop. N'Ya, Ta, Be, Ca, Senators, Eh, Mu, De, Dash, Se, Yid, Se, Z, Em, Bos, Se, Bim, Eh, Gu, Te, Sa, Vice President, Ta, Ma, Adala, Ma, Igel, Tirigel, Gu, Agent, Si, Tira, Gu, Gendele, Igaidil, Tok, Ra, Drac, Se, Eh, Bos, Se, Edel, Gu, Mbog, A, Dung, Ya, Igel, Gu, Ru, Ered, Ra, Tok, Ra, Drac, Ra, El, Al, Ram, Al, Mo. Sulang.
Karian Odo. Senator Basilius.
Oya, Kamit, Er, Gado, President, Ra, Fi, IFM, Kamit, Ol, N'It, Ra, Meeting, Ra, Tu, Stay, September, Ten, The, Next Week, Ra, One, PM. Di, Bod, Mit, Eda, Lu, Tl, Mesa, Tyal, Eh, U, Res, Uh, Tyal, Eh, Loan, Ah, Saudi, Eh, Di, Bod, Ka, Meeting, Ra, Ro, Uy, Eda, Lu, Tl, Lo, Mes, Ringi, Ra, Ot, Ta, Bder, Ra, Next, Day, Session. Sulang, President, Ra, Senate.
Ndi, Kian, Odo. Kajli, Gunt, Tia, Short, Twishes. Session, Yid, Il, Mora, Order. Pro Leader.
President, Ah, Ra, Gah, Announcement, Eh, Bod, On, Sim, Ma, Pok, La, Motion, Ma, Do, U, Uli, Ta, Blai, Eh, Do, N'Ya, U, Udon, Nga, La, President, Ra, Senate.
Si, Da, Motion, Nam, Dun, Eh, Second, Tirigel, Ro, Uy, Gong, Ya, Do, Oi. Om, Tok. Nam, Oi, Se.